At the end of the meeting, I would like to draw your attention to the usual fire regulations which are on the screen behind me and up alongside the public gallery. Also, please ensure mobile phones are switched to silent and councillors, can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure your card is pushed firmly into the console. So, moving on to the items of business, the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 2nd of November 2016 have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I assign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Very.
Thank you very much. Apologies for absence, have there been any apologies, Gary?
Yes, Chairman, we've received apologies from councillor Tom Martin, Liz Wheatley and Bob Upton.
Thank you. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
Yes, Chairman, we've received declarations of pecuniary interest from yourself regarding planning item B2 and B3 as you're acting for the agent for both applications. As a result, councillors will leave the chamber prior to consideration of items B2 and B3 and councillor Byam will take over in his capacity as vice-chairman.
Thank you very much. Do any members have any other non-pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Jolly good. Have there been any questions received from the members of the public, Gary?
None received, Chairman.
Peter, would you like to advise us of any updates of government guidance or legislation that we should be aware of?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I just have two matters to update the committee on. The first relates to amendment to part 16 of the General Permitter Development Order which relates to permitted development rights for electronic communications code operators, so telecom type communications. So I'll just run through overheads of what those changes are. One relates to emergency uses. The period for which land may be used for an emergency has extended from six to 18 months and now includes a requirement to notify natural England if works are located within a triple SI. In terms of new masts, prior approval is now required for masts in AOMBs and conservation areas of up to a height of 20 metres and masts on undesignated land of up to 25 metres or 20 metres where this is on or adjacent to a highway. In terms of alterations, it follows through what those additional height allowances on new masts are. Prior approval is now required for increasing height of masts on unprotected land to a height greater than the existing mast up to 25 metres and again the 20 metre restriction applies when it's on a highway. In terms of on land such as the AOMB and conservation areas, again, it's up to, it's higher than the existing mast or up to 20 metres, the same as the provisions for new masts. In terms of building based apparatus, no limitations now apply to the installation, alteration or replacement of small cell systems on buildings which are not dwelling houses or within the curtilage of a dwelling house, although development remains subject to conditions. Just to confirm what a small cell system is, these are low powered radio access nodes. They either operate under licensed or unlicensed conditions and they have a sort of range of 10 metres up to 2 kilometres. The second point, just to update members on, is some changes to the guidance, the National Planning Practice Guidance. This covers changes to advice regarding decision making and neighbourhood plan, policy creation as well. I haven't picked up on all the changes, there's about eight or nine, maybe more, pages of amendments to PPG. What I've just picked out for is just the key headlines where we've got changes in advice on matters relating to decision making, so we will assist members and we'll refer to those as and when required, but I'll just pick out the headlines. There's a new model checklist for site specific flood risk assessments, so that will need to be accorded with. There's some revised wording regarding planning obligations, though this only makes reference to current three statutory tests set out in the SIL regulations, so it's just revised wording really, doesn't change anything that we'd usually do in applying that. There's confirmation that affordable housing contribution should not be sought from small scale or self build development. There's a requirement for the local planning authority to notify the EA if permission is granted for any development likely to lead to deterioration of a water body. There's advice regarding funding of wastewater treatment and suggesting you can secure funding from developers if required and further advice regarding the type of properties that will not be required to pay infrastructure levy. As I say, there's a huge amount there. I intend to circulate to members of the committee an email with those two key changes and links to PPG, the National Planning Practice Guidance, and I'm happy to take questions either now or please, we can take them offline if that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I seem to recall that the Chancellor in his autumn statement mentioned something about grants being available to councils to build affordable houses. I wonder if you would have received any news about that at all?
I can take that question away, I don't know what the specific update is on that, I can check with colleagues in our housing team, enabling officers and I can come back to you if that's okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you. How do we define small scale?
Thank you, Chairman, I noticed I made that point. So, in terms of, the provision is currently, the threshold is 10 units or a square metre age of a, combination of units, 1000 square metres or more additional floor space of residential, so hopefully that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Just for information, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 9th of January 2017 at a time to be agreed. Now, to move on to the planning applications, the first one, item B1, reference WA 2016 1962, the former Batemans Laboratories Building, Catterell Lane, Godalming. Jenny, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Start off just by reminding members of the location and some photographs of the existing buildings on site. This is the layout plan, I mean, before, if you remember, there was a block of flats at the back and there were the four houses at the front. We now have two coach houses sighted on the site boundaries. This is the elevations for the flats at the back. Again, members may recall that previously the application was for flats with a flat roof and a modern contemporary design, so obviously what we have here is more traditional design with pitched roof. And just the floor plans. This is showing what the two coach houses on the side elevation will look like. There'll be parking spaces underneath and then one bedroom units above. This is the, one of the, two of the houses on plots two and three will be this design and the other two, this. I just thought the 3D views are actually quite useful to give you an idea, so you've obviously got the houses on the frontage, the flats at the back and then the coach houses to the side. Just to remind members, the changes from the previous developments, we now have, instead of the flat roofed block, you have a block with a hit roof. Because the accommodation and the roof space is limited by the pitch of the roof and to maintain viability of the scheme, we now have the two coach houses and the front houses have been reconfigured. And just also to draw members' attention again to the infrastructure contributions and to advise that the section 106 agreement has been drafted, that's been agreed by both the applicants and the council, and we're just now awaiting the agreement by the county council which hopefully will be forthcoming shortly. Just the determining issues for you. Obviously, the site's on the northern side of Catterell Lane, it's currently occupied by a single storey commercial building. It's within the developed area of Godalming where developments may be acceptable subject to impact on visual and residential amenities. The proposal here is for 14 dwellings with four semi-detached houses on the frontage, block of eight flats and two coach houses. All buildings, as I've already stated, would have traditional design and materials. 10 parking spaces are provided under the coach houses. There's also a central parking area with a further 10 parking spaces and then four parking spaces to the rear of the semi-detached houses. The parking provided is in accordance with the council's parking guidelines. The loss of the commercial use is considered acceptable given a previous appeal decision accepted the commercial use is no longer viable and as a result of further up to date and extensive marketing information provided by the applicants. The proposal's been amended following refusal of the previous application, the main change obviously being the block of flats with the pitched roof and the two new coach houses. It's considered the changes made to design and layout are acceptable and would not be detrimental to the character and visual amenities of the area. The changes are also considered to overcome previous concerns about impact on residential amenity by removal of side windows and balconies and the proposal also provides satisfactory amenities for future occupiers of the flats. The applicants have agreed to all contribution requests and the draft legal agreement, as I've already said, has been prepared and we're just waiting for the agreement of the county council. In conclusion, the provision of housing on this sustainably located Brownfield site is considered acceptable and the proposal is not considered to be detrimental to visual residential amenity. Approval is accordingly recommended, subject to completion of the section 106 agreement and conditions are set out in the committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Members, I open it up to you. Councillor Martin.
Thank you. I'm strongly opposed to housing in Catterell Lane, I think it's tragic that we've lost our commercial space and employment land all along this road and this is another example of that tragic loss of commercial land. However, the inspector concluded that this proposed development would not have a material harmful effect upon the supply of employment land in the borough and reckons that it shouldn't be given long term protection for employment use. I profoundly disagree and MPPF paragraph 22 makes similar points and with that I profoundly disagree. However, they carry more weight than I do and I shall have to very grudgingly go along with the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reynolds.
Well, not unusually, I concur with everything councillor Peter Martin has said, I do agree with him, although I would say positively on this scheme, it is much better than the previous scheme. I think the design is a lot, is a big improvement, I like the coach houses, I think they add a nice feature to it, so if we're going to have some development on employment land which we don't particularly want, I think this is the best sort of development we can probably have in that, on that land at this time, so I, slightly grudgingly as well, but I think it's a lot better than before, so from that point of view, I will go with the officers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds. Councillor James.
Thank you. It just shows you, because we refused it last time because it was simply diabolical, they have to come back with something that I think actually is quite attractive, so I will support the officers.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Chairman. I find myself concurring with some of my colleagues, councillor James and councillor Reynolds, they're certainly more attractive buildings and there's plenty of small dwellings. I note that the front houses, the front dwellings, I think are three story, whereas the text of the agenda seems to suggest they're two story. Page 33 refers. Can we just clarify that it is three story?
Two and a half.
And my other point is my wish for some electrical charging points for cars. I didn't notice them in the conditions. Could we possibly have electric charging points for cars? Thank you.
Thank you, we'll come back to that. Councillor Thornton.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor James said exactly what I was going to say, it looks 100 times better. And I walked past there the other day actually and if you, one of the photos actually showed it's overgrown, 1960s building, it's going to have to be knocked down. It is a shame that commercial land is going, but I mean, this is one of the things in Castle Lane at the moment and I'll agree with the officers. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all mourn the passing of good employment sites, but with this particular site, it was, well, I think we all felt it was pretty awful before. They did come back and I think councillor Bolton and I attended a pre-application meeting and did have a preview of this design which I think we both thought was a great improvement and I think it's telling that the last committee meeting, we had a packed public gallery of objectors from Catterell Lane and now I think they're in support, so I'm tended to agree with my fellow members. Officers, would you like to comment on councillor Bolton's point?
Yeah, I'm assuming you're talking about the white houses here. I mean, from my point of view, they're two story with a room in the roof space rather than three story, there's certainly no higher than the two story that adjoins it. I think before they were all more this sort of design, I think actually having the, these as a more prominent feature actually is far better, gives you a far better entry into the development, far more attractive, I think. But I would call that two story with rooms in the roof space.
And the charging points for cars?
Thank you, Chairman, sorry, we're going to pick up. If members would consider that's an appropriate condition to add, well, I'm more than happy to add a condition requiring the provision of on-site electric charging points for cars, so, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a second, or? Multitude. Councillor Holder, I think, has a hand up first. So, we just move to the addition of a condition regarding electric car charging points, I'm sure there's a better technical term than that, but I'll leave that to the officers to deal with. All those in? Thank you. Against? Okay, thank you. Did you count that?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Holder wanted to contribute.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm a little bit worried about the drainage of this application. I noticed that Thames Water has asked for attenuation tanks to be installed for flood water and I see no evidence in either condition 17 or condition 18 that attenuation tanks are included as part of the sustainable drainage statement, I'm wondering if they perhaps should be included.
Comments from the officer, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'll just pick up, so on page 15, we have the response from Thames Water of your agenda. That is, the first part of their response is advisory telling them the responsibility, so in terms of Thames Water taking forward and they confirm in terms of foul drainage, there's capacity to accommodate that. Moving up the page, you have the Lead Local Flood Authority and they've confirmed that satisfied that the proposed drainage scheme meets the requirements set out and recommend that should permission be granted, suitably worded condition, and while I'm speaking, I'm hoping Jenny is going to pick out and tell me the exact number of condition to refer to requiring the provision of that, so bear me one moment. Yeah, so, yes, I've just turned to the page now, so on page 56 of your agenda, condition number 17 secures the provision of the detailed drainage requirements on site and that's in accordance with the Lead Flood Authority's recommendation, so hopefully that picks up the technical detail. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Holder, did you wish to come back?
So, Chairman, it does say on page 15, in respect to surface waters, recommended that the applicant to ensure that storm waters are attenuated.
Yeah, Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. So, we have got a satisfactory drainage requirement, the flooding, the flood risk section picks up on that on, sorry, bear me one minute, I should have turned to it. On page 43 of your agenda, the Lead Local Flood Authority are happy that the drainage provision and attenuation on site is acceptable, so we feel that is hopefully covered by their comments and the condition that you've got on condition 17. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Thornton, did you wish to come back?
Yeah. It's just, electric cars are not the future in my mind. If they put an electric point in there and there's no electric cars within that, that's one parking space gone. So, you know, where does that person, they can't park there because it's electric charging point and if someone, and also, if there's an electric parking point there, is it open to the general public to use?
Councillor Martin.
Question along the same lines, I'm sorry, it all went very quickly in terms of you're taking a vote on this and we never got the chance to discuss it. Have I missed something along the lines here? Is there, has there been a change of policy by the Waverley Borough Council now to encourage electric vehicle, that's what I've missed, sorry, I wasn't aware of that. Could I please understand the, from the officers, what is the requirement or, and is it a requirement for all new housing? Sorry, I have just missed out on that.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, councillors. There's no upgraded policy or a new policy around it. What we've seen on other schemes is requests from Environment Health on larger commercial schemes, sorry, larger residential schemes where it's close to or within the air quality management area, so they're seeing provision of on-site electrical, or encouraging the use, you can't make people own them, but providing them encourages people to own electric cars, reducing the emissions particularly on Flambard's Way which is, there's an air quality issue. So that's, that's the reason to try and mitigate and try and reduce the amount of bus type vehicles moving in and out of there and reduction in impacts on air quality. So where Environment Health think it would help reduce that, they have applied that on various schemes. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Thornton, did you wish to come back?
Considering Waverley Borough Council won't put them in their car parks, I find it very difficult to understand why we're making developers put them in a development where the cars that can't be parked there, if all, all the residents have petrol cars, that's one parking space not being used.
Councillor Holder.
I tend to agree with councillor Thornton, in fact, if you go down to Sainsbury's supermarket, you'll see there's about six bays that are reserved for charging electrical cars, the owners of cars that are electrical can go down to the supermarket and get their cars charged there.
Councillor Hunter.
I disagree with councillor Thornton, I think electric cars will be the future and so any resident who buys a house there cannot buy an electric car, you, I find it ludicrous, I think some provision has to be made somewhere in case they do.
Councillor Byam.
Yes, I'm coming to this debate rather late, interesting, I suddenly realised that I don't know exactly what is required for, in a private area in terms of what level of safety and electrical connections that you need, but what about the poor person who's now had to give up his car but is now wanting to drive an electric cart backwards and forwards? I remember dealing with an old friend of mine down in a retirement village and struggling to find somewhere where he could actually park and charge his electric scooter. And in fact, what they found was, in the end, is that they had a room there which was specifically designed for parking their golf buggies, sorry, their golf cart, trolleys, which were electrically charged and he was able to use that, but there was no real provision given. I think it's a good idea to have, and perhaps every bay itself, if it's not too demanding a requirement, to have every bay with the ability to get a vehicle charged if that's what they wish to have.
Thank you. We have voted on this and it was eight to two in favour, but if someone would like to propose that we now remove this condition and we vote again, so, okay, councillor Thornton would like to propose that?
I'm happy to propose, Chairman.
And seconded by councillor Peter Martin. So, the proposition now is that we remove the condition that we've just added to include charging points. Can I have all those in favour of removing that condition?
That's three.
And those in favour of retaining that condition?
That's seven.
So, okay, so we continue to include that condition. Do members have anything else they'd like to discuss on this application apart from charging points? Now, okay, in that case, we'll move to the recommendation, so recommendation A is that subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement to secure contributions towards education, waste and recycling and environmental and community facilities and subject to conditions 1 to 21 plus the additional condition regarding charging points and informatives 1 to 12 as set out in the report. Advertisement consent be granted, I don't think that should read advertisement consent, consent be granted? All those in favour, please?
That's unanimous.
Thank you, members, the recommendation to grant is agreed. We now move to recommendation B, that should the requirements of recommendation A not be met within three months of the committee resolution to grant, then permission be refused for the reason one as set out in the report. May I have all those in favour of that recommendation to refuse?
That's unanimous.
Jolly good. Thank you, members, the recommendation to refuse if the requirements of recommendation A not be met is agreed. Right, members, so I take over and we have item B2 which is WA 2016 2001, the erection of extensions and alterations following demolition of the existing detached garage at Silver Birch, Oakdean Road, Godalming. Tim, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Chairman. Members, the application is for a number of extensions to the existing dwelling, the dwelling's outlined here in red on Oakdean Road, known as Silver Birch. The area is residential, detached residential dwellings. This is the proposed block plan, essentially two side extensions are proposed, either side of the dwelling, a new pitched roof over an existing single storey section at the rear of the dwelling is proposed and also a new pitched roof over the two storey rear section of the dwelling is also proposed and three front dormer windows as well. This is existing dwelling on site, currently a simplistic sort of chalet style bungalow dwelling, a single storey side extension is there to the side of it, the garage there which is proposed to be demolished as part of the scheme. You'll note the two flat roof elements at the back, pitched roof proposed on both of those. Let's see, proposed elevations, you can just about see out, outlining dotted line is the line of the existing property, so proposed is a side extension here and here and the three front dormer windows and front porch. Single storey new pitched roof over here and one at the back there, you can see on the side. Looking at the proposed rear elevation, the changes are really here and here and two new pitched roofs here. This is existing floor plans, just to show you really the general layout, the garage there to be removed, proposed floor plans to seek two further bedrooms upstairs, so side extensions here and here, three dormer windows here. Then was a note in the report that the committee had previously granted permission, which is extant, which is the scheme to top here with the front elevation, the proposed extensions and alterations to the dwelling is the same as before, the only changes are the addition of the third dormer window centrally here and the porch height has been reduced. So that's just to make clear that the proposal is, although for everything again, the main changes are the addition of the third dormer window central and reduction in porch height. This is the photographs from the site, you can see the existing dwelling there at the front. You can see the existing dwelling there, at the front, at the rear, new pitch roof here, side extensions here and there, and the three new dormer windows would be here. Since determining issues for this application, members, design and visual impact, impact on residential amenity and amenity space provision are for consideration. In terms of design and visual impact, really with the extant permission in place for the, a number of the extensions proposed, the main consideration is the additional dormer window in the central position, and the new front porch reducing height. So in terms of master judgment, really, you're looking at those additions. Residential amenity is always a judgement with extensions to dwellings. And amenity space provision is there because the proposal does take up some space at the side of the property on-site, and so that is a consideration as well. Overall, officers are happy with the additional dormer window and reduced size of the porch, and therefore recommend permission be granted. I do have a, one update on the update sheet for you, with the additional representation that has come in. So really, you can see the response there from the representation and officer response to that. So the recommendation remains as set out in the agenda, but also on the update sheet there. Thank you chairman.
Thank you very much. Members, councillor Holder first.
Thank you chairman. As this design is just slightly different from the one that was approved in April, and the actual layout of the plan is exactly the same, I see no reason why we shouldn't accept this straight away.
Thank you. I just wanted, this is part of, this is located in my division, I just wanted to say that I'm in favour of the proposal, although of course this was a very controversial application when it came before us earlier this year, on the grounds that it was a very large house on a very small plot, which then robbed the house of the future of amenity space, and it was fiercely opposed by many residents in my division. However, that's history, and the change here is very modest, so I would go along with the officer recommendation and agree with the, agree with the agreement to grant.
Does anybody else wish to comment before we go to the recommendation? So the recommendation is on page seventy-seven, and that permission be granted with the four conditions as written down. Is that agreed?
Yep, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much, members. So item B three is the following one, which is WA twenty sixteen one nine oh one, alterations to dwelling to form two flats, number nine, South Street, Gottingen. Tim, we shall turn to you.
Thank you chairman. Members, the application site currently comprises an end-of- terrace residential dwelling. It's currently a three-bedroom property situated over three floors, sites within residential area along South Street, sorry, and also Croft Road running to the south here. This is existing front elevation. There are no proposed changes externally to the building, so the current proposal is for conversion only. That's currently access to what I would call technically ground level, and there's lower ground level here, which currently has existing access down the side of the building. Here's the existing floor plans. So at lower ground floor, currently kitchen, bedroom, living room, bedroom, ground floor, and then two further bedrooms at top first floor. There is currently a garage that serves the property on-site. There's a photograph of the existing property, so you can see there the front elevation of the building. Due to the slope of the road, the, you could say, lower ground floor level is not fully underground, you could say, so there is some reasonable outlook from the windows at lower ground floor level. Let's see, proposed floor plans. Proposal is for, to convert the existing dwelling into one two-bedroom flat situated over two floors, so that would be called flat one, which would be ground floor and first floor. So two bedrooms, first floor, kitchen, living room, ground floor. And then the additional flats, one-bedroom flat at lower ground floor, with utilizing the existing access here. Both flats meet the minimum gross floor area, standard sizes set by the government. The existing garage parking space would serve apartment one, which is a two-bed property. In terms of determining issues on this application, visual amenity is normally always a matter of judgement, although there's no alterations proposed that are still on that side. Impact on residential amenity, really it's in regard to the living conditions of the future occupiers, whether the accommodation has good outlook. Vehicle parking, we have put on this side. You're noting in the report that there is one space that serves a three-bed property at the moment, and when applying our guidelines, there is already existing shortfall to the existing dwelling, and taking into account the size of the flats proposed, we remain happy that with one space serving just one of the flats, which leaving one-bedroom flat without a designated parking space, given the site's location to the town centre, and the existing shortfall of our guidelines from existing dwelling, we're happy with that aspect. So overall, chairman, I obviously recommend permission be granted, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, councillor Reynolds.
I don't really have any objection. I know recently we saw an application very close to this, which was the other way around, it was two flats becoming one, and there was a complaint that we were reducing the land, or the housing supply, but now we've equalised it, so I think that's perfect. Thank you.
councillor Bolton, Jesse, you up?
Thank you chairman. This application is in my ward. I am concerned about the lack of extra parking. I'm quite sure that the residents of both dwellings would like a place to park, and reluctantly though, I support the application, especially as it provides much-needed smaller dwellings, but I am still reluctant. Thank you.
councillor James, did you indicate or not? You didn't? Okay. councillor Thornton.
Thank you chairman. We've got South Street Car Park just off the road, and you also got a CPZ in Croft Road. If they want a, if they want parking, they can apply to get a permit and try and find a space in Croft Road. And also, you've got Croft Road Car Park, which is literally a hundred yards down the road, so I don't think the parking thing is a problem.
councillor Martin.
Thank you. I'd make the same points. There's, I think, quite a lot of parking around. I think we're, sadly, our CPZ was introduced into this area, so that now there's stacks of parking along Croft Road during the day, which shoppers can't use anymore, so I wouldn't have thought during the day there's a problem, and during the evening they can go to the other car parks. And I think during, in the town area, we're rather more lenient in terms of car parking than we are perhaps a little further out, so I wouldn't object on that at all.
councillor Holder.
Thank you chairman. I'm slightly puzzled by the subterranean nature of the lower ground floor flat. On page eighty-three, it's got bedroom three. In fact, I would assume that that is the only bedroom on that flat. And I'm just worried about the windows. What, if you're going to build something underground, where does the light come in?
You can see it, sure.
Where?
Next to the garage, so that's the window there, and there's another window a bit further along, won't you fancy?
Oh, okay. councillor Martin just pointed out, I withdraw my comment.
They've got a window. councillor Bolton, you look very.
Thank you for allowing me to come back. I really would like to say that Croft Road is very limited on parking at certain times. Yes, during the day, the commuters have gone, but in the evening, when people come home, it is extremely crowded. Thank you.
And presumably at that stage, the Waverley car parks are empty because they're no longer charging. Was that, does that preempt what councillor Reynolds was going to say?
Well, it's a CPZ chairman, and the commuters can't park in Croft Road anymore, like councillor Martin said, or shoppers. But I would, actually, to be fair, I was one of the people to put my hand up for a CPZ purely for the residents wanting one, and obviously I was elected by the residents, so that's what I did, whether I agree with it or not. But commuters can't park there, and it is during the day, Croft Road is pretty empty now. I mean, admittedly councillor Martin is right, and it could be used for shoppers, but I don't think parking is a problem in South Street.
councillor Reynolds, did you want to say something else?
Well, I heard you say that I've got plenty of people in my ward in Chard house who would love to have a house which would guarantee parking outside their doors. Unfortunately, they don't, and they don't even have a local massive, you know, hundred-and-fifty space car park, which is virtually empty in the evening, anywhere close to walking distance. So I think this is no problem at all, having no parking for this flat, because of the two big car parks, which are virtually within a four-minute walk.
Thank you very much. That seems to be the end of the debate. Can we remove, move to the recommendation on page ninety-five? That permission be granted with the conditions as shown.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. That permission is granted. Thank you very much, gentlemen. A nice easy ride for me this evening, and enjoy the rest of the evening.